It pays the Misha fee, but there's also money left.
Yeah, that fits a lot.
It wasn't a vestal ship. Well, it was in the west of the country. There's the terror that was in there, that they weren't sure. It worked out. Do you like that? Oh, no, this is the other. I wore red.
Good stuff. This was basically.
Arena part down low. I mean, that's. Make it so. I don't want to do that. It's so. No, no, you know, they're just saying, even if they want to do that.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. Two twenty-six of eighteen, five thirty P. M., St. Joseph's School District. Board of Education meeting. Call the meeting to order now and have a roll call.
Mr. Coke?
Here.
Ms. Pasley?
Here.
Dr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Hodges?
Present.
Mr. Sneeden?
Here.
Ms. Prusman?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for doing that. Board members, our norms are as follows. Prepare for our board meetings, listen to, understand, engage in purposeful discussion, collaborate respectively, make evidence-based decisions, and demonstrate professional and ethical governance. Please govern yourself accordingly. First order of business will be audience participation. Before we get started on that, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sort of like church, everybody just kind of. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you and commend you for being here tonight. I know everyone's here with a passion and everyone's here with a reason that is normally not before us. But what I want you to understand is that these cuts are just as painful for us up here as they are for you who have to endure them. I want you to understand that none of us are, none of the cuts or changes are personal vendettas against anyone, any program, any situation. These are all things that have been manifested to us because of our financial condition at the moment. Not saying that in the future with more financial support, some things can't change, but this is what we're faced with now. So please understand that nothing that we're doing tonight as far as reduction in services, programs, or staff is an easy task for any of us seven that are sitting before you. This is a task that no one enjoys having to perform. And we hope that everyone will be professional and cordial and polite to each other. And let's do this in a way with a good community spirit. I know that in the future, our community will get behind the district even more so, and things will change. But as for now, this is what we have to work with. So please be mindful that all of us are in this together. This is a community. We need to work together to make things happen for our children. Every one of us in here, we've already had our moments. This is about our future. We don't want our school district to become distressed. We don't want our school district to be taken over by the state. That's why we're doing what we're doing now, to head off that avalanche. In the future, with community support, we can get these things done that need to be done, and everyone will be better for it. But remember, the things that we're doing today and the things that we'll do in the future are about our future and this community and our children. We have four individuals that would like to speak on audience participation today. And the first one is Becky Veeth. If you would please come forward, and I'll let you have the mic, ma'am.
If I may interrupt this for a second, the item on the agenda, two point one audience participation parameters per board policy. I don't think we only have four of the participants. I think we just leave it with the five minutes.
Yeah.
Everybody in agreement?
Yep, so we're just going to remove two point one.
Well, you're just waiving it.
Do I need to make a motion for that?
It might be best to waive that.
I make a motion that we waive two point one audience participation parameters per board policy, B. A.
Second.
So we have a first and second for two point one. Any more discussion? Seeing none?
We're leaving it at the same.
We're leaving it at the same.
Yep, five minutes.
Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, any vote?
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes. All right, sorry to interrupt you there, Ms. Becky.
That's okay.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I want to thank you, Board of Education and Dr. Newhart, for allowing me these minutes to speak tonight. And this is my twenty-fourth year of teaching preschool in our district, and I am blessed to work with some of the best educators in our district inside our early childhood department. Our preschool department is highly respected across the state. Many times, we've had other districts send their teachers over to our classrooms to observe and take notes in an attempt to make their own classrooms even better. We have something to be very proud of here in St. Joe with our preschool department. Unfortunately, with budget cuts, our program is going to be severely affected. We all wish those cuts didn't have to be made, and jobs didn't have to be lost, and the program didn't have to be restructured. However, we understand. We understand that those things have to be cut, and we're a part of this whole process. But I'm deeply concerned when we not only start cutting the number of kids that we're going to be able to service, that we are cutting the quality of education that those kids left are going to get. I just want to paint a little picture tonight for you of what some of those classrooms are going to look like next year. Eight of our classrooms next year will have seven kids that we need to get ready for kindergarten. Those classrooms will also have eight or more kids that we need to reach their IEP goals. Goals such as language development, behavior goals, and adaptive skills such as potty training and more. Some of those students will be barely three years old with delays. The minute they turn three, they can be placed in our classroom, whether it's August, March, whatever, the minute they turn three. And when they have delays, we have to think way back even much younger than a three-year-old. Their needs must be met, and with only two staff in those classrooms, it's going to be really hard. It's going to be a challenge. Currently, those types of classrooms in our district have three teachers, one classroom teacher and two paraprofessionals. In that type of classroom, one teacher is out of the room frequently with potty training and diaper changing and doing those sorts of things because those students, a lot of them, still have those needs. With this new proposed structure, that will just leave the teacher behind to meet the needs of the other students while that's happening. And please don't compare our classrooms to other grades when we're thinking about teacher-student ratio. These are kids who just turned three with assessed developmental delays. It's a different type of situation. With only two teachers in those classrooms, I feel we're giving that classroom teacher an uphill battle before she even begins. Many days, her only goal seriously will be survival. And that's not fair to her, and it's definitely not fair to those kids that she's going to call her own next year. And sadly, the end result, honestly, I feel, is we're going to lose extremely talented teachers because they're going to start looking elsewhere where they can have support and be successful doing what they love, because that sort of system we're throwing them in is just going to be ridiculously hard. So I know that we have to restructure, and these cuts have to be made. What I am begging you to look for is to see if there's any monies to fund eight additional paras for those eight classrooms. This is the one time we're at our advantage that our paraprofessionals in preschool are desperately underpaid, because it won't take that much funding to reinstate those eight jobs. Those eight jobs are needed, I feel, to provide quality and safe care for all the students in those classrooms. And if you're unsure in the slightest bit about whether this is fair to those preschool students that we'll get to still serve next year, please visit our classrooms and talk to us. We're disheartened with the number of students that we're going to have to cut, but we still have to provide an equal and quality education for those students lucky enough to be given spots in our classrooms for preschool for fall of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Next will be Mr. Roy Maxwell.
I didn't used to have to wear these. President Rucker, members of the school board, Dr. Newhart, I come to speak to you tonight about item eight point five, pay to participate. I was the band director at Central High School. When the current thirty-five dollar participation fee was instituted, this was done without any discussion or warning, so I do appreciate the fact that we are discussing this in an open meeting. Band, choir, orchestra, speech and debate are all classes. They all have board-approved curriculum. To lump them in with activities that have no curriculum and meet totally outside of the school day is wrong. It is really an apples-to-oranges comparison. I know there are several classes offered that have a fee associated with them to offset the cost of supplies. However, everything the students need are supplied through that fee. Students that are in band and orchestra pay hundreds, and in some cases, thousands of dollars for an instrument so they can participate. Now you're asking them to spend even more money to be allowed to participate. Are you ready to, are you prepared to supply each student in band and orchestra with an instrument like you do in other classes? What if a student is enrolled in one of these classes but doesn't participate in any Misha sanctioned events? If all they want to do are the concerts and the football games, will they still have to pay the fee? What if these classes only participate in Misha sanctioned events that take place within the boundaries of the St. Joseph's School District? And no transportation would be necessary. And yes, there are several things that happen in district. I know there are several proposals on the table for discussion tonight. Option one uses the total number of students that are eligible, not the total number currently participating. Have the students been surveyed to find out how many activities they are currently participating in and how many they would be able to participate in next year? If you're going to make a decision, you need to have the most accurate information. Also, why are we charging middle school students for music? There are no Misha activities, to my knowledge, that require the district to spend any money on transportation. If there is one that I'm missing, charge only those participating for the transportation. We have a large number of students on free and reduced lunch in our district, as you well know. For some of these students, the current fee is an obstacle, but they're able to figure it out so they can participate. If you're going to charge them fifty dollars per activity, there is no way these students are going to be able to continue participating in the same number of activities they have in the past. You know as well as I that participating in these activities is some of the only motivation that some of these students have to stay in school. All three of the high schools have seen significant growth in both the band and orchestra programs over the last several years. I can guarantee you, people are going to notice immediately that the band is not a biz when they go to the football games. People are going to notice that we're not going to be able to provide them a jazz band or a string orchestra to play at community events. People are going to notice that the musical aren't what they used to be. The fine arts program in the St. Joseph's has brought a great deal of national and state recognition to the St. Joseph's School District. We have been recognized as the best communities for music education, which used to hang up here, that banner. And we have been recognized by the Kennedy Center. With the implementation of this fee and now the four-day rotation of the arts in the elementary schools, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to maintain this level of success. The board has stated over and over again how you want to be transparent, and we've all seen the signs, it's getting better, and we appreciate it. This plan has too many unanswered questions. Are the classes going to be charged the same as activities that are not curricular? How are the funds to be used and distributed? Is the money going to stay in a fund for those specific activities? Or are the larger participation programs going to subsidize those with lower participation rates? I can tell you, band, choir, orchestra, and football are going to generate a lot more money than some of those activities that only have five to ten people in them. I never criticize without offering a plan for improvement. I would recommend working with the teachers, coaches, and parents that this would affect, to develop a plan that makes sense, is equitable, a plan that can answer these questions and many others, be open and transparent. I appreciate the difficult choices you have had to make and those that you still have ahead of you. On this issue, until you can answer these questions in a transparent manner, you have to table this vote. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Next will be Joel Fisher.
Good evening. My name is Joel Fisher, and I am the director of bands at Central High School and at Bodie and Truman Middle School. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about the pay-to-play and the concerns from a teacher on the ground, working in the buildings, and seeing the impact that that's going to have on our students. It is my understanding that currently the Misha activity fees are going directly to each building and that the buildings are paying the Misha fees, conference fees, busing, et cetera. It is my understanding that the proposal for next year is that the school district will be paying these fees, and the proposed activity fee will go into a downtown school district transportation account. As presented by the Board of Education on their agenda, you can see that between high school and middle school students, we have fifteen hundred students that participate in approximately thirty-three hundred activities. I just want to be sure before moving forward that we understand that if passed, that this financial burden of the proposed $145,000 will fall into the families of the fifteen hundred students in our district who participate in those activities. I know you'll see on the sheet presented to the board that at Central High School, there are five hundred and one students that participate in Misha sanctioned activities that would require this fee. Three hundred and fifty of those are students that are enrolled in curricular music courses. That's approximately seventy percent of the students that participate in activities are enrolled in a course that would be, that would require a fee. You will also find that a similar percentage of students is found at Bodie and Truman Middle School students for those students that are enrolled in an orchestra or band class. Based on the info presented, we can see that there are many students involved in multiple activities, roughly two activities per student. Families will reduce their child's involvement in lieu of this fee, and I know that I have already had a few parents that have approached me in regards to our program, and I know we will have fewer because of it. One additional concern that I have is, is it the intent of the district to remove students who cannot or will not pay this fee from our courses? This is something that is concerning because it is a curricular course, and it can create some problems. One, it would reduce the amount of income for pay-to-play. It could also create some facility issues because these students have to go somewhere else from our classes, and we don't, there are only so many desks in other classrooms and other fine arts courses that these students can enroll in. And then lastly, these students need one fine arts course to graduate from high school, and with the option to take non-tax courses, I believe that those non-tax courses would be, will be overloaded. On a side note, we have generous donors and a booster organization that want to help support our music students, but their hands are tied because they cannot sponsor a student according to Misha rules. In conclusion, there are a few things that need to be looked at before moving forward. Thing number one is that a current cost-per-sport or activity breakdown needs to happen. This will clarify to the public how much it costs to have each activity and sport and the number of students that that activity and sport impacts. Item number two is that the community needs to know how much money these activities cost and how each activity is to be funded. Based on the three options being discussed tonight, there is about a $37,000 discrepancy between option one and option three. I think it will be important to know what our target is to adequately fund these programs. And lastly, parents understand that the money needs to come from somewhere, they do. But right now, there is a lack of clarity in where this money is slated to go. If this money goes into a district rather than building fund, parents may not feel that their money is being allocated correctly or proportionately by activity. While this money is traceable, money from a district fund cannot be transparently seen to the public in how it will be allocated and if it is being allocated fairly. If seventy percent of students involved in activities are enrolled in a curricular course, that should be considered in allocation and separation from true extracurricular sports and activities. Our music parents are some of the most supportive in the district and most supportive families in the community. This district has been named in the top four percent of districts in the country for music education multiple times due to high student achievement, teacher work, and most importantly, parental and community support. Please be considerate of these items as you deliberate, and we do not envy you in your decisions, because our parents are the people who will help support the school district in future tax levies and bond issues. We appreciate your time in allowing us to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will say, it is well noted that all three band instructors are there. Thank you very much. Out of next, Mr. Richard Schott. Title-one reallocation.
My name is Dick Schott, and I would like to take some of the baby boomers and some of the other people who are a little bit younger back to a little of memory lane. This is a book bag that you took to kindergarten when you were back in the forties and the fifties and the sixties, and in it, you had a one number-two pencil, but it was red, and it was very big for your little hands. And we only had eight colors in our Corellos because we didn't have twenty-four, one-hundred-and-twenty-four, and they're very big, also for our little hands. Everybody had their metal box. This wasn't Roy Rogers', but it is the original Campbell's Kids. So we all had that. But then there's the infamous, the infamous blanket that every kindergarten kid brought to school, because this is where they took their mid-morning nap. It's not that way anymore. Research supports the need for children to attend a preschool program. The research is undaunting. The Pew Research Center out of Washington states, "High-quality preschool can no longer be considered a luxury. Children need the benefits of a high-quality pre-K education to succeed. Today's kindergarten is yesterday's first grade. Children must learn the pre-academic foundations for formal reading before they enter kindergarten. Pre-K children become familiar with books, new words, ways to use language, and numbers. Children who enter kindergarten without pre-K stay behind their peers. If they do not recognize the letters of the alphabet when they enter kindergarten, it results in lower reading skills by the end of the first grade. Eighty-eight percent of children who are poor readers in the first grade will continue to be poor readers in the fourth grade, and so on. The St. Joseph's School District can be very proud of their early education program. After an afternoon visit at the Early Childhood Center during preschool registration, I have a better understanding of the screening process and the staff competes for every, and how the staff meets with every applicant for the Title-I preschool program. When a child does complete, if they're able to. When a child does complete, if they're able to, the one-year preschool program, which is four days a week, three hours a day, a detailed report is prepared by the preschool teacher. That report includes the results of two assessments, one at the beginning, one in the middle, that can list student strengths, four-year-olds' student strengths and student weaknesses of the child. The report can include teaching strategies and learning strategies to better assure that the child, four-years-old, can succeed in kindergarten and above. With the reallocation of Title I funds to the new school, the board must realize, the board must realize with that allocation that 136 four-year-old children will not be able to attend this most secondary preschool program. 136 children will not benefit from that preschool program. You, as a school board, must find the money to let these 136 students have a chance for success. If the final budget is only reduced by 7.6 million, then so be it. You have a responsibility to these children, many of which will come from families eligible from free and reduced lunch. They're not here. They're not here. They're not lining up to speed. They don't even know what it is. They don't know what those kids are going to miss. They don't know by not going to a preschool program that their kid is going to suffer all the way through elementary and high school. I will tell you almost at 100% that every middle-class parent, lower and upper, have sent their children to preschool. You know the importance and you pay for it. 60% of your children, that your children that you're representing are free and reduced. My question would be, do you really know how much money that is? You only have five minutes. But I will tell you that they cannot afford what we as middle-class parents can do. They cannot afford preschool and you represent them. You find the money because if you don't, those 136 kids will be seen again and kindergarten testing, first grade testing, third grade testing, fourth grade testing, fourth grade, eighth grade testing, it just goes on. You don't catch up. Thank you.
All right, next order of business will be approval of agenda.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
A motion to approve, the agenda's been first and second, is any discussion? Seeing none here and none in this vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next order of business will be superintendent's report.
Before I give my report, I do want to thank everybody's attendance here this evening. It takes passionate people to make a successful school district and there are tough decisions to make here tonight. Don't wish it necessarily on anybody, but unfortunately, that's the situation we're in. With that in mind, I have a short superintendent report. First of all, we do have two makeup days we have to add to the calendar. As part of the 1718 board-approved calendar, we had four built-in days and we had additional days tacked on the end of the year. We've used six, leaving the two, so basically, May 21st and May 22nd become additional school days. Friday, May 18th will be a full day. Tuesday, May 22nd will be the two-hour early out.
Dr. Newhart, can I ask, is that how it is already on this year's calendar that the last day isn't early out?
Correct, on the 1718 calendar, right. Any questions there? Secondly, I do want to present the budget reduction totals. Several of you asked for that here this evening, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Wes Metz.
Dawn, do you want to pull that up so everybody can see it? I think it's on the board agenda, that's why I wanted her to pull it out. It's right under the superintendent's report, the budget, there, right there. Okay, so, starting at the top, I started with 2017-18 budgeted numbers, and then 1819, these are preliminary estimates of what I think it could potentially be at the end of the year. A lot of the salaries and benefits won't be determined until we know specifically who is being, who's leaving, who's staying, and those kind of things because you could see a fluctuation of anywhere from two to three million dollars in those numbers depending on the level of staff that we have. So as you move further down, the first group, this is all the things that we've discussed so far, so these are what's included in the total salary decrease. So of the total salary decrease of $4,821,000, these are the estimates of what that makes Okay, the next line down, I included, I put together the purchase services and supplies, normally they're lumped together, that's the next group of numbers. So I listed out the individual things we've talked about, and then I've also, the difference is supplies, how I've reduced the supplies throughout the district. Some of it may be in purchase services also, but the bulk of it's going to be in supplies. And a lot of that comes out of curriculum.
I would like to make note on this Empower U one, that $25,000 was eliminated two years ago.
No. We used to be $50,000.
We used to give them $50,000, excuse me, it was $25,000, one-time lump sum, the rest of the $25,000 came from the students participating, okay?
Does that mean paying your own fee to participate?
Currently, no, we don't. What the recommendation is going into next year with Empower U is to remain the same what we're currently doing and placing it with the buildings and determining when and where and if, depending on what Empower U offers, if they go. So we're not necessarily looking for any changes there.
No. Right now, when we go down there, because we have been a partner with them, we can rent the whole facility for like 500 bucks. Next year, if we rent the whole facility, it'll cost us $3,000. So actually, as many times as we've used it, they're going to come out way ahead if we just rent the facility every time we want to use it.
So then why do we have a deduction of $25,000? Doesn't make sense.
It shouldn't be on there.
So we're going to keep Empower U, that educational opportunity is going to still be?
Be available to our, sorry, I thought that was on, to our sixth-grade students?
That is my understanding. That is my understanding, yes. I didn't catch that when this was placed on there.
Because that's a gym in our backyard and we need to take advantage of it.
Well, I've had those conversations with Empower U personnel, Dr. Gaddy, new CEO coming on. If there's something different or I'm missing, I wish the director or Dr. Williams would speak towards that.
We were planning on putting in the building budgets rather than the district budget.
Okay, so how's the building budget different from district? It's not district funds? It's money raised by the building or can you explain that?
It's allocated to the building as part of their supply.
Okay, so this, so again, I don't understand why it shows up on here as a minus $25,000.
It should not be on there. Currently, currently, when we, it was in 2016, 17, when the outright $25,000 was contributed just as a $25,000 check plus the student fees, we're not looking to do anything different what we're currently doing this year.
So probably it should have been taken out last year or the year before because it was a one-time fee. It's just continued to be a part of the budget? I mean, it's been continued to be a part of the budget even though we haven't been paying it? I mean, I still don't understand.
The reason it's on here is because it was on the list of things that were presented in December.
Okay.
The $25,000 was on the list that was presented to the board in December. That's why it's on here.
But it's not part of the reductions that are being proposed tonight.
So then we would take that $25,000 out of the 8.3 something, something because it's really not being deducted out?
Well, roughly out of 2.69.
Well, out of your total, you would drop to 8, 8,305 instead of 230.
And that basically is the same way too on your pay-to-participate, that number is an estimate.
Sure it is.
Right.
But that is an estimate, I understand that, but this was a deduction and for what? That was the question.
I think several board members also were asking for that same reduction sheet that was presented in December.
Yeah, I asked for it because I wanted to see it total up to 8.3 million. I wanted to know if you were going to ask me to cut and vote on that, what was being cut. Okay, I have a couple other questions.
So does that help with the clarification there on that?
It does for Empower U for me.
So, but going back to the point about pay-to-participate, this estimate is higher, 50% higher, I believe, than your current, than any of your current scenarios.
Those, that's the reason why, they're estimates, and that was the estimate that was given in December, okay? That's what's being shown there, okay? The estimates you see tonight on the agenda item is the latest estimates we can give you. And again, it's a...
Initially, I took 150,000 out because it was not going to be just MISHA items. I added the MISHA items because I think that's where we're going to end up. But when I initially did it, see, the proposals tonight do not include all the non-MISHA activities, which would have put the number closer to the 150,000.
Because eventually it was presented as with the paid sponsor and that's, yeah.
Yeah, and then I think that it was quickly discovered that it was going to be very hard to be able to do that.
Well, and some people, it wasn't necessary, I mean, it wasn't right to do it too. I have another question on the software program reductions, it's still at $75,000, but an email to Dr. Lau directly after the last work session, when I was questioning what made up that 75,000, and then we said it was the K2 test and the SRI, and that's now a 70,345.80, so that's about $5,000 difference there too that we're not going to save, even though I think we did save it, right? It's been savings, but I just want to make that clear to the rest of the board that wasn't in on that conversation. The parents' teachers at $100,000, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know it was presented, I have it on three different documents, that we spent last year or this year about $230,000 over the state, what the state budgeted, and the recommendation, I think at the work session was to just spend $100,000 over, right? And then it was presented that maybe if we could go to 125, we could have community partners that would come in another $25,000.
What you're seeing tonight is, on that agenda item for PAT, is a cap at 125 district contribution by Mosaic. They supplied a letter of intent for that and we are appreciative of that.
Most definitely.
For $150,000 total. And the same, you know, this is a projection because it's dependent upon number of visits that can be made, but we believe this can be done with the same number of staff that we have and not take any further reductions there in that program, but still save that over $100,000 with that program.
Okay, so just to point that out to the board, because that is different than what we was presenting in work session.
That is different.
And I agree with it, I mean, I'm great with it. And so then, yes, so then that means that according to Deb Coons who is here, other than that position, her position, because she's leaving, so we didn't fill that as the coordinator, that's the only true cut and that's that 100 million, or 100,000.
There'll be some other little things.
Small things, because it doesn't quite total to that.
From supplies, materials.
But we shouldn't have to cut to part-time or do any of the things.
Correct, the current staff is in place.
Okay, and one last...
Now, if somebody would leave, that could change.
Sure, sure, I understand that. Okay, and one last question. What's being recommended tonight to IB is not to deduct that 60,000 in testing, but to see these second-year kids through, pay what we promised the students and parents we would do when they started the program this year, which I'm great with. But again, I don't think that $60,000 is a deduction here.
It will not be as much as 60,000. There will be test fees, the recommendation is to pay the test fees for the second-year students to complete the program this next year.
Okay, so with that and the $25,000, or Empower U and the 5,000-ish at software, that gets us close to $100,000 that's not going to be coming off, that's presented on this total, correct? Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding each of those. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Coe.
On the pay-to-play, I just, because to me, this is somewhat confusing, the big numbers here, but somebody tell me if you have a student who plays band, does cheerleading, and plays softball in the spring, my understanding in the past, they paid $35 for those three activities, what are they going to pay next year?
I think we need to probably leave that for the line, the agenda line item.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, to answer those questions.
I have one question about the parents' teachers. Are we going to cap the number of visits that they can make in order to try and keep that number where we're setting it?
It's capping the number of hours and trying to get more visits in the regular work week.
Okay. Is it more visits, the more we get reimbursed from the state? So we wouldn't want to cap that if it's possible for them to complete them?
Basically, we're trying to cap our district contribution at 125,000.
But the way that we've been doing it, our part goes up because we did it out as a percentage.
Correct.
And so even though they were bringing in more money, we were spending more money because there were more visits. So that's my question, if we're going to try to cap those visits, which brings in income?
We're capping the hours.
Mr. Metz? So we're about 90,000 less on these numbers here, just from what we're talking about today, right?
And again, these are just estimates at this point.
I understand that, but we're about 90,000 less, is that correct?
Correct.
I had one other question. We had brought back the, where was it? The PTO buyout, you have that as $260,000? And at our work session, we had come to a consensus that we were just going to do away with it completely, so I think that estimate was $330,000?
That's if you didn't do the buyout of the extra days at the end of the year and we decided we were going to leave those in.
Previously, that hasn't been discussed, but you wanted it added to the agenda tonight, so that is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, because we had talked about that at our United SJSD meeting a couple weeks ago.
Dr. Green?
Sure. And Wes, your capital reductions here, that is, that's based on what we would have, what you originally had budgeted in the capital budget?
Yeah, I mean, so I budgeted $4,565,500, so we cut $1,585,500. Basically, all we're doing next year is the CIP projects, a million dollars for technology, we got to make our bus payment, and there's a couple of other little maintenance things, but all other purchases for capital has been eliminated from the budget. That's all matching grants, all that stuff.
Okay. And understand, if those capital projects come in underbid or better than what we anticipate, that's a good thing to have, that number could be a better cost savings.
Right. We don't have a choice.
Any more questions? Dr. Williams?
Good evening. Based on tonight's agenda, I prepared a brief report. The first thing that I would like to point out that was not on my report is that we did make final adjustments to the summer school calendar this afternoon, and that information was sent out to staff. Based on the snow days and then the makeup days tacked on to the end of the year, the summer school teacher workday is now May 24th. Session one begins on Friday, May 25th and ends on June 20th, and session two begins on June 21st and ends on July 18th. So that information has been communicated, but I wanted to publicly state it to you as well this evening. So the documents that I have put in my report tonight, I've spent a lot of time recently developing the Northwest Missouri Apprenticeship Program. Part of that work also is that I was supposed to present to a community group last week regarding workforce development in St. Joseph. That has been rescheduled due to the ice storm. But this is the information that I will be sharing with them, and you have copies at your stations. It's an infographic, it's really a rat card if you're into marketing terms, but I printed it on a letter-sized piece of paper for you. But what that... But what that shows are the efforts that our district is making, really K through 12, in the area of workforce development. So on the front side, which is the one that starts with the little briefcase at the top, you see the breakfast with the experts. That also includes the luncheon learns that we do at the middle level. So we have three different areas of trade and career that rotate through our elementary, or excuse me, our middle schools and our high schools throughout the school year. The United Way Speakers Bureau helps us locate those speakers. We have manufacturing day, where we partner with the Chamber of Commerce and Hilliard Technical Center, and we send upwards of 400 students into our local industry. We have youth apprenticeships, which you'll hear more about in just a moment. The teacher externship program, where we place as many as 15 teachers, and actually, the email that I received this afternoon looks like we'll have places for more teachers this year, for four days, in an immersion experience within our community businesses and industry. And then finally, at the bottom, you see the career exploration icon. That begins in elementary school. When we connect our students with our local industry, we give them tours in addition to college for kids and other kinds of activities. On the backside of that RAC card, what you'll see is the MT1, or the Manufacturing Technician Certificate course, that is at Hilliard Technical Center. You'll see Hilliard Technical Center itself listed, Project Lead the Way, which begins with gateway to technology at the middle level, and then in high school, ends in the engineering and biomedical strands. Strive for Five, attendance and the habit of regular attendance in the workplace and in school is a work readiness habit. I know years ago, when I was at Central, I had business people come saying, "Thank you for putting an emphasis on attendance. We do have great desire for people to come to work every day." Strive for Five has been very successful this year, also has been very challenging, but I think it is part of our workforce development effort in this community. And finally, you'll see the career pathways icon at the bottom. On our district website, the students are able to resource through all of the potential careers in the domains of creative, business, health, helping, fixing, and nature. So those are our wide domains in terms of areas of interest, and within those areas of interest, students can explore the career pathways that are available to them. So I think that we have broad openings in terms of workforce development. We're doing a better job of communicating those across the board, and I appreciate the partnerships, the bridge between school and industry that is happening currently in our community. So I wanted to share this with you. I'll be sharing that again at a community event this Thursday morning. And then the other piece of information that you have is really a frequently asked questions sheet that all of the students who are interested in the Northwest Missouri Regional Apprenticeship Program will receive or have already received, both in the Savannah School District and in the St. Joseph School District. This coming Friday, March 2nd, we will be touring three of the businesses here in town who are sponsoring apprentices. We currently have 25 students signed up, three from Savannah and the rest from St. Joseph. So we'll be touring INM, Lifeline Foods, and Triumph, and all of the students and their parents have received this information with all of the logos on the front. So I wanted you to be aware of the marketing material that is being published for this. We have other businesses who have reached out to us with interest. Again, I will remind you that the three strands of apprenticeship out of the 2,000 possibilities in the Department of Labor, we are doing machining, welding, and industrial maintenance technology. So those are the three we begin with.
What's the cost of the St. Joe School District in this apprenticeship?
The box lunches that we are providing for the students. We're going to do a working lunch with them this Friday, where I'm providing them with a sandwich and some chips, and we're going to talk with them about how to successfully fill out a job application, because we have developed a live job application that they have to fill out. Those will be screened, and they will go through a live interview with school and business panelists, and will be selected from that group. So we'll be giving them pointers on how to look people in the eye, shake hands firmly, dress appropriately, you know, make sure the gig line is straight, all of those kinds of things. And that really is the cost to us, the bus for the tour and the box lunches. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. A lot of what we're going to do tonight is hard and heavy and gut-wrenching, and this is amazing. This shows us that, you know, we are in tune with the 21st century in this workforce development. I just want to commend you, Dr. Williams, and your academic team, and the opportunities for our students and our staff with the teachers' externships is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Casely, I would say that it's true of all of what's happening in our district, despite the challenges that we are all under, teachers, students, parents, community, all of us. There are bright spots still in our district, and there are a lot of people who are working really hard to make good things happen. We all appreciate that there are challenges, but we still try to do the very best that we can for students.
And that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next order of business will be approval of donations. Dr. Green, would you like to take care?
Sure, Mr. President. Let me pull it up here. Okay. Once again, on your agenda item two...
5.1.
5.1. Long list of donations here. The community, as always, very giving to our students and to our efforts, as we see here, and so we, the board, are very appreciative of these contributions, and so I make a motion to accept these donations as listed.
Second.
They have a first and a second motion for acceptance of approval of donations. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Next will be our consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a first and a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next will be approval of bills.
There's also another handout that I gave you guys tonight.
Yeah.
This would have been stuff we paid Thursday, Friday, and Monday. The reason for the supplementals, because we were gone most last week, sure, with the weather and stuff, so there's a lot of staff stuff on here, and we wanted to make sure everybody got reimbursed for their out-of-pocket expenses.
I'd make a motion that we approve the bills as presented, along with the supplemental.
Second.
Have a first and a second for the approval of bills. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. GE Health, can you tell me what GE Health is? Healthcare? And maybe you can't right off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head. I think it may have something to do with...
Where is it, Tammy?
It is on page three, no, yeah, page three.
I'm not sure what it is. I'll have to pull out the invoice and...
Okay. That was just a substantial amount, and I was just curious about that one.
Healthcare, it's probably something to do with some kind of special services that we have to contract it. Yeah, I can look it up, and I'll email all the board.
Thank you.
And I'll send it to Robert, and he can send it out there.
JTM Provisions Company, do you know what JTM Provisions is?
Those are clothing, I believe, like fundraiser clothing, it sounds like. How much is it?
It's like 8,916.60. It's on page five of the supplemental.
Again, I'll have to look that one up, but it sounds like some kind of fundraiser for like t-shirts or clothing or something like that.
Appreciate it.
But I'll look those two up, and I'll make sure and email all the board, let them know what they are.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
These are the nonspecific memo names, so...
Okay, we have a first and a second. And discussion, no more discussion. Motion passes 7-0. Next will be approval of the January 22nd Board of Education meetings minutes.
No, 7.2.
Oh, I'm sorry, January financials.
Wrong section.
I'm reading the wrong section there. January financials.
Our fund balance at end of January is 38 million. This is typically the time of year where our revenues are the highest. We collected almost 36 million. I don't exactly what it is. 31 million, 31.5 million came from local, and that's typical this time of year. So that's why, this is the time of year that our fund balance is at its absolute highest. So what I do with a lot of this money is I do short-term investments. I do about 50% of that in short-term investments until August, so a lot of six-month stuff. We get, we're going to draw about 2% interest on that, where our regular checking is only drawn about a percent.
Right. I appreciate you being proactive with that.
Yeah. Any questions about any of the financial numbers?
I would make a motion that we accept the financials as presented.
Second.
First and second on the financials, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Next will be our bank reconciliation statement.
It's just our bank reconciliation for the month of January, it's just for your review.
I move we approve the bank reconciliation.
It's just for information only.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry.
That's okay. And the health insurance is also.
Open the gun.
Is there any questions on the bank reconciliation?
Just again, thank you for doing it.
My staff worked very hard on it.
All right, can you get a motion for the reconciliation? So it's just info, info on them, okay. All right, how about our health insurance balance?
You can see on the health insurance, this again is just for your information, our balance is still staying very healthy. We're almost at 4 million. So we are staying, so we're still very confident that we can do the reduction that we have presented to the board.
And Lori has made comments that we have had a heavy year.
Yes, yes.
So as heavy as it's been, we're still doing very well.
We're still holding very strong, yes.
Still very strong.
Very glad that we made the effort to go to the self-funding.
Next will be our personnel report.
The personnel report came in in three parts, actually, this time. The regular personnel was delivered electronically, and then at each of your stations, there should have been two different documents in the supplemental. The one is a four-page document that has some color print on it. Those are all non-director, building-level administrators plus supervisors and coordinators. And we're asking that you offer them contracts for the 18, 19 school year. And then the other supplemental report were those that were turned in to us after last Wednesday.
Can I make this motion that all of them that are presented be approved, or do you want them separated?
I think they certainly could. Could be together, yes.
All of them? Well, I would make a motion that we accept the personnel report, along with the supplemental information as presented.
Second.
I have a question. A couple principles on here are new for next year because someone's leaving at the one that they're at. So we've already, haven't we already approved something for them?
I don't believe there's anybody who's been previously approved, and you will have some in executive session that were newly interviewed and offered positions this past week.
But they're not on this list, correct?
No.
Yeah, they wouldn't be until after executive session.
Come to executive session.
Well, there is one on here that we did approve an executive session.
That's what I thought.
Previously.
Previously. Yes. But this, but this...
This is a reappointment?
It says reappointment, so we don't. I just didn't know if it mattered. I guess it's fine that way. Thank you.
They'll feel doubly appointed that way.
Well, yes, and that's fine.
It'll make them feel special.
That's fine to do. No problem.
I'm assuming Dr. Kraus, that the Activities Director at Benton isn't on here because we're still pursuing that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second on personnel report. Any more discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Next, we'll go to old business, and so it looks like there's about six items here that warrant some deeper discussion as far as making decisions on how we adjust, how they fit into the adjusted budget. The first one we'll talk about is preschool reallocation, the Title I budget. I know just enough to be dangerous, I guess I could say. I'll let Dr. Newhart speak to this in a minute. The Title I dollars need to be allocated in a certain way, and that's where we're at, and we are out of space with the closing of two schools, so I'll let Dr. Newhart speak to that and the preschool quagmire we're in right now.
Dr. Williams? Dr. Norman?
Well, first, I'd like for you to explain, make it plain, so everyone can understand that this reallocation is something that we have to do.
Correct. Every year, we look at our federal Title I A monies and decide as a district how we're going to utilize those monies. This has been going on for a number of years. One thing we need to clarify, we're having to add three additional schools next year to serve. However, our allocation from the federal government is not changing. So we have to make the amount of money the federal government gives us go farther, we have to stretch it. In addition, we're anticipating a reduction of that federal money, and we have budgeted using 10%, because that's, we believe it'll be within the 5% to 10% range, and so to be safe, we have budgeted with a 10% reduction. So in looking at title services, we are required to make sure that our children meet the academic standards in math and reading on our state assessment. So that is the purpose of this money that is allocated to the local school district from the federal government. We can utilize some of this money for preschool services in order to get our children ready for school. We have an obligation to serve our children in K through 8 buildings. We can serve children in school buildings that have 40% or more free and reduced lunch. As a district, we have chosen to use, to serve buildings that are at 75% free and reduced lunch. So that's where we are with having to add the three additional schools. There has been some question about the closing of Lake and Humboldt. We are still going to be serving the students that came from Humboldt and Lake in their title schools, and we do the allocations to the individual buildings based on per pupil. So...
So there's an understanding. A lot of people, I think, believe that we're already allocated that money, they're just moving buildings. We're talking about these new buildings are new buildings that have never received title funds before, that have to receive title funds now.
That is...
And we have no control over that. That is a federal mandate. That's not something that we, as a board, can decide whether or not we're going to put money, that title money, into those buildings. Am I right?
Correct. So whether the local district was in this financial state or not, we would be having to look at reallocating these funds, and we would be having to spread it over three additional buildings.
Thank you for clarifying, because I know that's been a question that's come.
Well, one of the questions I had, and I was not here at the work session, I was out of town, so I couldn't have asked it then, but I did ask, and got an email response and all, but I just wanted to clarify because it's a little bit hard to understand. We've added three schools because three schools during this school year reached the seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch. Is that correct?
Actually, two of them hit the seventy-five percent this past school year. And so we were notified at the beginning of the year that we had to serve them. And we used our carryover funds this year to make those.
So they've been, that's the, didn't it say, I'm trying to remember, like nine hundred and ninety more students?
Correct. So our allocation, when we were allocating these resources last year, we were not including those nine hundred and ninety-two students in our allocation.
Right, and then suddenly you learned you had to, and so we've.
And we had to scramble, how do we find those resources for those? We believe that we will now have three schools, those two that were this year, plus Pickett Elementary, be at that seventy-five percent threshold for next year.
And then the federal government allocates these funds based on how many children that we have that need it?
It is a formula based on the local free and reduced numbers.
Okay. So that hasn't changed then?
Correct.
It's just the number of schools. So that's why the money's not changing.
Correct.
And then we, you're guessing that the federal government's going to give less because of political everything that's been going on?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And when will we know for sure? Do we know, Wes, when we'll know that what the federal government's going to cut?
Hopefully, we'll know by the end of April. They try to give us preliminary numbers at the end of April. But I have seen it go as late as September before they finalize it, everything. That's the absolute latest I've ever seen it. But I'm hoping to have something by the end of April.
Okay, two things. First of all, as a comment, my two cents worth. But somewhere along the line, a board and a superintendent chose not to use local money to fund the preschool program. And because of that, we're missing out on opportunity for some additional money to come to the school district possibly this year if we had had any local dollars in preschool. And so what I want to say to us as a board and to our academic staff is as we, you know, we may have to make this cut now, but hopefully there's a day that we're going to start adding back and, and doing this again. And when we do, we have got to include local dollars. I mean, even, you know, our stakeholders have to understand that they're going to have to put local money in preschool or we will never be able to continue, you know, be able to staff preschool like we staff it now. I mean, we do a phenomenal job. You know, no doubt, as the teacher said, this district, their preschool program is looked at as, you know, one on a hill. And that's a proud moment for teachers and for board members. But sometime, we have got to realize local dollars have to go into preschool in this district. But now my question would be, we had the plea, which I understand where she's coming from one hundred percent, for eight additional pairs. Do we know, Dr. Kraus, or Wes, or Dr. Newhart, what it would cost to staff eight additional pairs? And is that something that we could look at as we see if, in fact, money is cut from the federal government or whatever, how we could go about maybe in the next few months adding those eight positions?
With benefits.
Eight, eight pairs with benefits, based on step one of the para schedule, would be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
But they would like to be more than that because we have pairs now that we'd be using, right, that are.
Yeah, I mean, that, I just did quick numbers based on the first step of the schedule. I added in the benefits, health insurance and everything. It would be about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to add eight pairs.
That's definitely a need. And I think we need to be aware of that. We need to be watching the money in April or September. If we have to add these positions in September, they're still going to be needed then. Of course, the benefit to the staff, current staff, would be to add them as soon as we could. But, and one last comment is, you know, it is our job to fund K to, K to twelve. That has to be our first priority. I understand that as a career educator. And so, again, gut-wrenching, but sometimes it has to happen, so.
Explain the preschool setup proposed, real quick.
For what, the plans for next year?
For eighteen, nineteen.
There will be one preschool at, I gotta get to my notes. One at Truman. And then the other two locations are the ELC, which is the Old Neely Building, and Oak Grove.
And how many classrooms will be at Neely and Oak Grove?
Go back to the email. My numbers.
Just want to make sure everybody understands this.
Oak Grove will have eight. ELC will have four. Truman Middle School will have one.
For a total of thirteen. And with that, basically, you would not have a preschool at the Enright Building that is currently owned by the foundation, but we have an agreement with the foundation. That agreement does end in August. And then secondly, it would be also taking the space for the YMCA daycare at Oak Grove.
Yes, that's the only way you're going to make this happen.
How many preschool classes do we have this year?
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
So we're losing how many classrooms again?
Six.
Six.
Of those, of those six classrooms, Mr. Metz, what's the cost of those six classrooms?
It would be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Seven fifty?
That's what we reallocated in the Title I funds, I believe, yes.
And I would want to make a point too. I think that, I'm not sure, sure who made this point. But the preschools are going to be for that seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch, right? Is that the area that we're, in other words, the, our most, our children in the most poverty, however you want to say that, are going to still be served. It's, as you go up the chain, there are.
A family's income level is just one part of the screening process. So we serve those that are, it's one part of the process.
Yeah, one part of the process, and then it's.
Income at all? It's based on developmental delays.
Oh, okay, so it is all developmental. There isn't anything about income?
You can use income if you choose to. This district has not, in the past, used an income level as a criteria.
So taking the Title I money out means that the people who just have low income are the ones that will not have the classrooms, is that right? And it's the people with delays, developmental delays, that are the ones that will be.
The children that have the greatest need first.
Academic need.
Academic.
Along with develop, I mean, physical need, but academic need.
We probably need to clarify, there's two different preschool programs that we have as a district.
Yes.
We have early childhood special education, which are some of the situations, the three-year-olds that we serve. Those are within our early childhood special education. We have no caps on that. We are required to serve any child in our district that qualifies for early childhood special education.
And that is fully reimbursed?
Yes, yes. And then the other part of early childhood programming that we have in the district is Title I preschool. And those are based on that early childhood screening that was referenced earlier. And there is a, the most need are served first.
And so in that early childhood screening and the most need, there's a, there is the potential for about a hundred and thirty kids not to be served, is that correct? Is that the numbers that we heard earlier?
Yes.
For the six classrooms?
Yes.
About a hundred and thirty kids.
Okay, I have another question, I'm sorry. When the lady got up and spoke about the, the classroom that needed the para in order to change the diapers and all that stuff, that's a special needs classroom? Early childhood special education, right?
We will, whatever is allowable will be funded. So what is allowable and will be fully funded will be one teacher and one para. That is, that's what we can afford to fund with the funding that is allocated to us.
The federal funding.
The federal funding.
The early childhood special ed funding?
Either early childhood special education funding.
Do they have a maximum number of children that need to be in order for that? One para and one teacher?
That is, that is what we're allowed and that you can get reimbursed for. Anything above and beyond that will be local funds, which, again, you just asked the question, what would it take to fund eight additional paras? And Wes gave you the answer, and that will have to be locally funded.
Right, I just, I then heard about how it's fully funded by, what is that, EES?
Even with, even within early childhood special education, there are limits to what they will reimburse us for. So I do seek the maximum that they will give us.
So I just wondered about that.
But they set parameters as to what you can ask for. You can't just ask for whatever you want. So to whatever is allowable, we always ask for. And that is what they'll pay for.
We, we utilize the program, the early childhood special education, anything that we can offer, we offer. We even now offer point five nurse, point eight occupational therapist.
I will drill it down to the tenth of an FTE.
I mean, we.
To get some dollars back for something.
Exactly. And, and one thing about the early childhood special, it's deferred. We spend the money this year, we don't get it till next year.
Right.
So when you increase your special education, you actually deficit spend the first year, but then you get reimbursed in the future years. And we do have to serve every early childhood special education. So if we have an influx or an increase next year, we could have to offer more classrooms, okay?
There's also a maximum on what the caseloads are. And those are available on Dusty's website. So you have to have a minimum number of students to be fully reimbursed. But there's also a maximum caseload. And then once you go over that, then they will ask of you to start seeking additional FTEs that they will reimburse you for. But it may just be at, you know, twenty percent of an FTE, which would just be like pay for one day's worth. But they will reimburse you once you go above those maximums.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
With the current financial need and situation that the district's in, right now, there's, there's kind of a felt need and maybe real need to refocus these dollars on K eight. These, refocus these Title I dollars on K through twelve. Obviously, these dollars weren't necessarily this focused on K through twelve before. And, and I don't, would anybody be able to speak to the rationale previously of putting local Title I dollars in early childhood education as opposed to K twelve?
I think we have the surplus, isn't it?
We, I wasn't here when these decisions were made.
I understand, I understand.
But I can infer that local dollars were funneled into the K eight program, such as all of the regular education classroom teachers that were added to drive to the state desirable standard in the past few years. And so the classrooms were smaller. And so children that had needs in reading and writing and math got more attention. Whereas now, we don't have those local resources and we're going to the state standard. So our classes are going to be bigger. So there is a need at this time to add some additional dollars back at the K eight. But I wasn't here to know why that decision was made. You know, investing in early childhood is a, is a great investment. I will agree with that.
Most districts will use some local dollars to fund preschool. And also, most districts will qualify based off the, I believe it's the hours and the type of community, you know, locale for the Missouri preschool grant. They actually receive state dollars. That is dependent upon the hours of operation, those types of things, and the clientele served. We don't qualify for the Missouri preschool grant.
We don't qualify, we're too large and there's other demographics that are involved. We've looked, we've, we've, we have looked extensively into every program. And I, I, you can ask Tammy back there, because we have went through everything we possibly could to try to find more money for this program. Because it is an important program. It's not something we want to do.
Exactly. Well, and I've tried to stay a little quiet tonight because I'm still kind of sick. But looking at this, we're serving a hundred and thirty less students next year. So that impacts a hundred and thirty lives. If we were, if we as a board decided that we wanted to, to put local dollars into it, it's going to be a little over a million dollars, plus we need space. To be able to, to serve those needs. I've been around a long time, and it's, it's very clear that the earlier the intervention for our students, the better their outcome. And that's their lives.
We could consider going ahead and spending that, that is something we could consider doing.
And deficits been that. But I would say this too. And I'm the educator, folks, and I taught kindergarten. And I understand the importance of early childhood education. I'm a huge advocate. But again, our obligation is to K to twelve. What we've done is had a gold medal early childhood education program for a long time. And we had money to do that. We had lots of reserves. We had that sixty-three cent levy that sunset. And so now we don't have the money to do that. And though, there are going to be a hundred and thirty-six kids that aren't going to be serviced by the St. Joseph's School District. It doesn't mean they don't have opportunities to attend preschool in this community because we have lots of other opportunities. Now, will the parents have to pay to do that? Yes, I would even, you know, venture to say that there are maybe parents now who are getting these services who could maybe afford to pay that. But, you know, we're not at a gold medal anymore. I don't even know if we're at a bronze medal anymore. And so those students may not be served in preschool in the St. Joseph's School District. It doesn't mean that they don't have opportunities to go to preschool. Now, I'm basing that on what you told me about the students with the most needs, we take first. And, and that's kind of a progression. And so now granted, again, when we have poverty levels where we have them, you know, maybe not. But I also know that when, you know, parents are resourceful, when they have to be, and they're not when they don't have to be.
I do also want to make sure and note that by reallocating these dollars, you're also going to be serving nine hundred and ninety-two kids that would not get served. Okay, if you didn't do it.
Exactly.
Okay, so your trade-off is nine hundred and ninety-two kids by reallocating the dollars. Yes, you're leaving a hundred and thirty-six potential preschoolers. And it's not that anybody wants to do it, but, but also, you, you, somewhere here, you have to look at the positive. What you're doing is breaking this, everything we're doing tonight, you're breaking this whole thing down back to the basic, unfortunately. But with that, in the future, as Mr. Rucker mentioned here earlier, you have a chance then to develop this however you want it to be. And that's really what you're after to get where ultimately you've got this setup that you want to have happen. We tried to show the district what that setup could look like with the November revenue issue. Obviously, we didn't do a very good job. But somehow, someplace, this community and the district has got to make some, some ends come together. So that, that's the positive side of it, I guess, is where I'm trying to, to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, and I understand that, and the thing of it is, is that we have made strides. And I know that there was some information that Mrs. Flowers had shared with us. I think it's been, I don't know, three, three months ago, maybe. But it was actually showing that we are making strides in those kids. And I understand, I understand all of this, I really do. But I also understand that the earlier that we get these kids and we make those interventions, the better their lives will be, the better that they will do in school. So at some point, and I know that this is really important to a lot of people because a lot of people have spoken about this for a very long time, is that we as a district and as a community have to decide that this is a priority. And that we will make early childhood a priority so that these kids, the outcome is different for them.
And we do that by putting local dollars towards it.
Correct, right.
Not just counting on, because when we count on federal money, and it's going to be cut, and it's never the same, and we're adding, this community is, is adding poverty faster than we can even fathom.
Well, to bring in, to have three more schools that meet the criteria.
Exactly.
I mean, it's just heartbreaking because people do not realize, the more kids that you have, the more schools that we add, we don't get more money. And quite frankly, we're going to get less money because of all of the games that people are playing.
And I want to remind the board that a few months back, we had a proposal to renovate Noyce for early childhood. And we didn't kill that. That was just tabled. And so going forward, that is another avenue that the district can, can go down to get your early childhood back on track. At least get it up and running one more time and maybe serve more kids with the central location at Noyce. We tried to do that, and there was a, just not enough real support.
It just costs for her to take, yeah.
It just costs prohibitive, yeah.
So...
We're trying to foresee this problem, though, that we're experiencing today.
Right, we tried to do that.
Don't we have some kids that pay for preschool?
Not anymore.
We haven't had any this year?
No.
No.
So anyway, even with what the decisions are made today, that proposal is still available for the board in the future to visit that, revisit your early childhood. And you have a facility that we actually allocated.
$500,000.
Actually allocated half a million dollars to renovation. So that's an avenue for the future.
Yeah, but then we found out it was going to cost three to four million to really...
To totally finish it. But that was, but that was adding more to it than just the early childhood.
Well, no, that was to get the locks on the doors and to set up a bus, you know.
It was a central facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were putting in a lot more.
Elevator, I mean, it had to, it had to meet certain, for the special needs classrooms to be in there, if you had certain things you had to have.
ADA, yeah.
So it was, it turned out to be more than we thought initially, is my point, is all.
But the half a million that was allocated was a good start to, you know, to get something started for this, to head this off now. But I just said that to say that in the future, there is some ideas out there, and you do have a plan that's already been started, that you can either carry it on or reinvent the wheel, either way.
I'd just like to say one more time that I really would like to see, as we know what the numbers are for sure, that come in, and as we, you know, dwindle, and then finish whatever cuts we make, and really see the bottom dollar of where we're at, to consider adding as many pairs of those eight, if not all those eight, that we can add back. I would like to see us do that. I'll be watching the numbers, I'll be watching the budget, I'll be bugging Wes, because I'm going to look for every dollar.
I think that's something on many fronts, that as this projection in spring and even into the summer plans out, but I think as of right now, you better be working everything you can for a balanced budget.
Right. And I agree, as much as it hurts, that's true.
I think, I think the district and the board are struggling over this, this need to hit a financial reset. And that's kind of where we're at as a board. But I think we're, I think we're also very well aware that there is great need in this community for early childhood, which means there should be great opportunity. And as we hit this reset, it does create opportunity for all the different community partners and the district to be sitting at the end, community volunteers, there's lots of interest, sit down at a table and figure out how we're going to provide and supply this need for early childhood, because there's, we're not meeting the need right now.
No, we're not.
As a community, we're not meeting the need, and we got to figure that out.
Right.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. Can I get a motion for 8.1?
Mr. Rucker, I know I may go by spinning on a, speaking on a term, and I will welcome a gout to say I can't do it. If I can make one more comment, I would...
Go right ahead, Mr. Schott.
We are looking for $700,000. We're not going to find it in an $8.3 million budget cut. You need to look for other money. We said by design it's a K-12 system. The K-12 system, in my mind, is an educational K-12 system. It is not all the other stuff that goes with it. You can see that this place is not packed. If you said, "We're going to close one of the high schools in two years, so we're going to start revitalizing and revamping the varsity program, so that we will kind of bring you into that." That is a highly charged political, this place will be bombing at the seams. We would have people outside with video cameras. What the board needs to decide is that can you go through the K-12 budget, because you're not going to get any more money, look at the K-12 budget and say, "Where do we make those big cuts that are highly politically charged?" So we get rid of assistant coaches. So we look at non-varsity sports in some areas. So we do start combining the high schools. You've got to do something. The only reason I'm up speaking again is that those 136 kids are going to lose, because we're going to wait until next year. And that, those 136 kids will never have a chance. They will not have a chance, because they will go that way until they graduate. And the rules would be, if you're going to do it, monitor them. Just find out what happens to those 136 kids. And no, it's need, the need is not money. The low, the most need is not the highest, the lowest amount of income, it's the people who have educational, psychological, cognitive, those are the needs. That means that those people in free and reduced lunches, making $25,000 a year, can you imagine that? You think they have money to sit there and pay for it? You know what it costs. They don't have it. So they are going to be at the lower end, very possibly. They're not going to pay for preschool. They're working two jobs. I thank you for that chance to talk one more time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Schott, always insightful. Okay. Board, can I get a motion to accept 8.1 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I have a first, or I have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion? Understand, this is a very difficult decision. Every one of these decisions that we're getting ready to make is very difficult. And I'll tell you, it's not any more fun for me this time than it was the very first time I got on the board. I was on the board for two months before, and we did the exact same thing. The only difference between now and then was, we did it at Central High School, sitting on a stage, and we had teachers that are sitting in the audience cheering when someone lost their job. That's not the case today. You have people here that are advocating for their positions, they're advocating for what they believe in, and they're being respectful. And they understand these decisions are difficult. I implore you to do what you feel is right, because none of these cuts are going to be easy to make. So we have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion on 8.1?
One question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Make sure I understand that we will be monitoring the revenue from the federal government, and if things change, if things look up, we will be able to revisit this at some point in the, in the future. Is that correct?
At least the eight additional pairs. Well, for this year.
I believe so. I, I would say we would, I would think that we would do that anyway.
Okay.
On anything that we're proposing to cut, that, because everything here, we're not cutting anything that's not beneficial to our staff, the community, and our students, not necessarily in that order. But everything here that we're doing is painful, because it affects everyone. And "everyone" is the key word here. Everything in this list affects everyone. Nothing here is a personal vendetta. This affects all walks of our school, of our community, in every avenue. So we have a first and a second, and no more discussion. Motion passes. Five to two. Next on the agenda is PAT.
I'll take this one. The proposal's there before you, is as I mentioned earlier, it's a cap at $125,000 district-wide, with a donation just for one year of $25,000 from Mosaic. There is a letter of intent signed from Mosaic. We're very appreciative of that support from Mosaic. For a total of $150,000, basically, district-community contribution, to maintain the current staffing as it is in place, and operating that for next year.
Current staffing and programming?
And programming, except for...
The coordinator position.
The change in elimination of the coordinator position.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second for 8.2, parents as teachers? Do we have any more discussion?
And thank you to Mosaic for offering that, to make this possible. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Greatly appreciate that.
All right, no more discussion. Motion passes seven zero. Next will be the elimination of the PTO buyback. Can I get a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept this recommendation as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second on PTO buyback. Any discussion?
So can we again clarify that, and we're making these changes that are in each one of these policies, that this will be suspended until, you know, we can unsuspend it, I guess? So instead of the $330,000, we decided at United SJSD, when we had our conversation, that we still wanted to be able to, because we have, I'm still not clicking on all my cylinders just yet, so we have, what is it, 110 days? So anything above that?
Let's have Dr. Kraus explain.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
In your packet, I gave you some alphabet soup. We've got board policies, GC BDA, GD BDA, and GCPC. And if you can say that three times fast, you get a prize.
Not me.
GC BDA and GD BDA are identical policies, except GC refers to certified staff and GD refers to classified staff. In your package, you had board policy GCPC. As it currently states, there, that's the one that talks about a $1,000 stipend for notification of early retirement if it's given by December 31st. What we're suggesting, and this went through United SJSD, as was pointed out, and through the meet and confer process with the teacher groups, we're suggesting the wording added on the second page of the proposed GCBC. For retirements effective at the end of 2017-18 school year, the district will accept notice of early retirement as defined above, and offer early notification of retirement incentive of $1,000 until March 16th, 2018. Basically, what that would give, any employee who did not notify us by December 31st would give them a little over two weeks until March 16th to give us their notification of early retirement. Anyone who did that would receive their leave buyback under the current policies, GC BDA and GD BDA. If they chose, if people who do not give notice of retirement at that point, or by March 16th, and decided at a later date to retire, would only receive the buyback portion for any unused days from this current year. All of our employees either get 12, 13, or 14 days based on the length of their contract, and so any of those days that they didn't use would be bought back under the guidelines currently in place. Any other questions or need for clarification?
I would just add that the discussion at United SJSD was to eliminate this, suspend it, because, so that we could save positions, so that we could save staff. So this is a phenomenal policy. We were super proud of it when it was written and put into place for this one year, or was this the second year? I'm not sure. This is our second year. And do we want to come back to it? I would tell you, yes, we want to be able to put this back in. That's why we suspended it versus doing away with it. But the intent with all employee groups represented was saving jobs.
And I think this was seven jobs, roughly? Five to seven jobs?
Well, if it's, if it's in the 300,000 range, it would be five to seven, yes, certified positions.
Estimated.
Estimated. We understand it's all.
Basically, it's what we're hoping to give people that chance again, and if they don't, then going into next year, you're not going to have it.
Right. Except for the buyback. Can you explain that?
Okay, we have a first and a second? Do we have any more discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Next order of business is the IB test fees.
Yes, just wanted to check in and see if anyone had any questions about the presentation from the work session. Again, the item tonight specifically states that the discussions at the district level regarding the IB program have related to the discontinuing of the paid testing fees for students. This calendar year, it's approximately $57,000. The projection for next year, just for the testing, is about $44,000 for the year-two students, so our current juniors, who are involved in the program. Central High School's administrative recommendation, due to the restructuring from the block to the seven-period day class sizes, there's a whole range of reasons why, was to phase out the IB program at the conclusion of next school year at this time, with students completing the second year of two-year classes, finishing the courses under the current procedures. So the recommendation for the board to consider tonight is to fund the year-two courses and the tests for students who are completing the two-year courses. There will be approximately, in addition, regardless of if we fund it or not, the continuation of IB, we are due to train five teaching staff for next year. So there's some inherent cost involved in that as well. Just a refresher from the work session, the annual budget for the IB program is about $132,000. For this year, the earmark that they have identified, because the training costs were not built into the 2017-18 school year, was approximately $111,000. So again, the item that we brought to you tonight is specifically to continue to pay for the testing, but more specifically for the year-two students next year.
Can I have a clarifying question? So what we're, you're only asking us tonight to decide is if we're going to pay for the testing for next year. We're not making a final decision whether we're doing away with the IB program for sure, one way or the other.
Central High School has made an administrative recommendation, so tonight, this is not an item about whether or not we're keeping IB or we're disbanding from IB. The administration, the administrative recommendation at the high school level was to phase that out, to allow students to complete. So next year, and we've been through the enrollment process already, so no one has enrolled in a year-one IB course for next year.
So basically, yes, you approve this tonight, you're finishing out the program of year-two students, as promised, and basically for 1920, you'd have to cross that bridge and either you restart again, or you find another revenue stream, and you do whatever you want to do.
Okay. Let me ask, let me ask this. So if we say, okay, yes, we want to fund next year's, this year-two program for these kids, but then we decide, or the community decides that this is something that we want to keep, I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction and just say, "Let's do away with it," because every year, we're fighting about these tests, are we going to pay for these tests, is this going to be this or that? I don't want to do away with a program that has value added to our students because of the financial constraint that we're in at this moment, because that can change when the revenue source changes. So I would hate to just disband all of it and kind of toss it aside and say that we're not going to do it again, but then if we decide in a year or two that, yes, indeed, this is something that we want to do, we have to start all over again. This is a multi-year, I mean, it took like four years to get through this whole process to even get it here, plus, I don't even remember how much it was, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the program here. So I just, I just want us to...
It's not going to bind a future board.
Okay, well, I just, I don't want to make a decision tonight that is going to adversely affect something that we may not want in the future.
But to be, but, and I, I completely, ooh, keep my hands down. I completely agree with that, but to be completely transparent about the rationale and what informed the central administration, moving from a four-by-four block schedule to a seven-period day facilitated so much of this, because IB classes in general, and not all classes, but many of them have very low enrollment. And so when you reduce 33 and 1/2 high school teachers across the board to right-size the district according to our enrollment and our funding levels, that, that has kind of necessitated this as well. So we all concur that IB has been very good for our students throughout the years, and I think that if the finances of St. Joseph were to turn around, we have the capacity and the understanding at Central High School right now, so it would take a little bit of time. So it would take a little bit of time to jump back up to speed, but ultimately, it would require pretty stable funding for the foreseeable future. But do keep in mind, it's not just about the dollars and cents, it's also about making sure that we don't have class sizes that are tremendously high across the board, because when you, you know, IB works when you have a block schedule. It becomes much more challenging when you have to reduce staffing positions.
Mr. Sneadon?
I move that we accept the recommendation for funding the second year only.
Second.
We have a first and a second on the IB test fees. Any more discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next will be the pay to participate. I imagine Dr. Haynes is ready for this one.
I imagine you've got a lot of questions. Is that what you're? Okay, so if you remember at the last work session, I presented one option, which was a $50 fee per activity at the high school that they participated in, and a $25 one at the middle school. Since that time, I've added two more options for your consideration. Option two would just be a $100 one-time fee at the high school and a $50 one-time fee at the middle school. The option one, the $50, would generate approximately $104,000. The $100 and $50 one-time fees, about $95,000. And option three was a $50 initial fee at the high school, and then $25 for each additional activity or sport. And at the middle school, a 25 initial fee with 15 additional sport or activity, and that generated approximately $68,000. I also provide you a list of Misha activities that this would, fee would apply to also. Just remember, we do currently collect that $35 fee. If these, one of these options was accepted, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't charge that 20, or $35 fee next year.
It's not in addition to?
It's not in addition to.
It's absorbed into whatever fee it is?
That's correct.
I really appreciate you giving us this list, because, to be honest with you, I didn't know what was Misha and what wasn't. So this does help in that?
The only non-Misha, I'll just say, it would be the flags program.
Flag, okay.
Mr. Sneadon?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. Oh, I have some notes here. Did, did you, there was a statement, the middle school, they don't pay the Misha fee, or do they pay it?
At the middle school, they do pay a Misha fee.
And how much? We charge them $25, right?
Well, we don't charge them anything at the middle school currently.
We just pay it?
We just pay it, yes.
How much is that?
It's $11, I think, isn't it?
Hang on, I've got. At the Misha fee, at the, at the, let's see, we pay for Misha, a little over 1,300 at Bodie, a little over 1,000 at Rubidoo, a little over 1,000 at Spring Garden, and a little over 1,000 at Truman for our Misha fees currently.
And we don't charge them?
We don't charge them anything at this time, no.
But that, that doesn't.
Roughly.
How much?
Around 5,000.
That doesn't.
Total.
Yeah, a little over 4,500, yeah.
That $35 would be way, $50 would be way too much for them, probably.
Well, it's 25 for middle school.
Are we, are they paying 25 now?
No, they're not paying anything currently. The proposal would be 25 at the middle school.
And that, that's the Misha fee and busing, is that right? Some busing is thrown in there?
That's what the fee would go towards, is the, at the high school, the Misha fees and the conference fees.
But now, you're, you're asking that for each sport or each activity, right? That's one of the proposals?
That is a Misha activity or sport, yes.
But they only pay that fee once, even though they're in multiple?
No, that's, well, you have the three options. At the, the option one would be that at the middle school, they would pay $25 per sport or activity that they participate in.
Well, maybe, maybe I didn't pass that right. The Misha fee, if you're in middle, in middle school, is that a one-time fee?
The, the school pays a one-time fee to Misha based on the number of students.
But we're only going to charge them per activity, perhaps?
That's correct, to help cover the busing, yes.
Okay, okay. And then, and then let me ask you another one. I'm going to wrap it up here. The credits, like the band and choir, those are curriculum credits, is that, is that right?
That's correct, they are classes, yes.
Okay, so we're going to, so they go to school, they take a class, and then we're going to charge them $50 to, to participate in Misha activities?
That's correct, because they do, they are part of Misha in their activities.
And is that again, is Misha a one-shot, one-time fee, or do they charge us each in high school?
No, it's, it's a one-time fee per student, and then there's a fee per sport or activity that you register into.
So we're paying 35 now?
Yes, that's correct.
For them? And, okay, what is the actual Misha fee? I know you got busing there, I thought it was, somebody told me.
Okay, so Misha for the high schools, we pay $11,870. And then for the high school conferences, we paid a little over 5,500 to belong to the suburban conference.
What does those numbers come out to per kid about, do you know? I know it's a hard question, but I want to see how much average kid?
The fees that we're going to collect won't cover all of the expenses.
Okay, well, let me.
Well, but that's, I've heard that it's only $11 per student, Misha charges that, so I'm confused.
What is, what is the fee per student?
Per student?
Yeah.
Well, well, you'd have to take at the high school, 11,800, you have a calculator, Wes? 11,870 divided by 1,069 students. At 11 or 12. Yeah.
Around 11 bucks?
Yeah, 11, 12 dollars.
But then you've got some busing in there.
We've got a lot of busing in there.
Right, right. I'm just trying to find out the real numbers here, because sometimes when you give it like that, it's lost. Get back to the academics. Now, when I was in school, many years ago, they started counting sports as a credit. Now, I'm hearing you got to do it four years to get a credit, is it? If you go out for basketball, four years, you can get a PE credit?
No.
Or is that out the window now?
They don't have that a lot of time.
Okay, so, so there's a difference between the arts and sports. In the arts, I'm counting all arts here, you got to get, you got to get a grade, you're getting a grade, and then we're going to charge them a little more to take the class. My concern here with all this stuff, I'm, I'm pretty much for extracurricular activities, because that's where I'm going to get to here. We have done, Dr. Newhart has done a great job and his staff in getting this to strive for five, and we got our attendance ahead of schedule, and we're going to make, we're going to get paid for that. What I'm thinking is, okay, if I'm, if I'm a normal kid and I want to go out for sports, maybe a couple, I played three sports, I did play the band, I wasn't very good, I carried a French horn, I was actually a drummer. But, you know, you might not want to do that if it's costing, you know, $50 here, I know you got a, you had a $400 cap or something?
That's for family.
For family. But if I had to choose, if I was a, let's say I was a sophomore or a junior, maybe I couldn't make the varsity, but I really want to belong to something, yeah, that, that sports helps me with my attendance, because I don't want to miss practice, because then I have no chance, you know, and then I hurt the team, or if I'm in the band, if I miss practice, I'm going to mess it all up, even though I played an instrument I really didn't know how to play. But you know what? I think the loss, I think the attendance, people won't go to school, I mean, why would I, if I'm sick and I don't feel that well, what motivates me to go to school if there's no activity that I belong to and no, no personal reason to go? Because when I was a kid, my parents didn't care if I went to school. It was all on me. And I think if we lose $80 a kid for not going to school, that'll hurt us a lot worse than this, this fee. Now, we're charging 35 now?
Correct.
And nothing for the middle school?
That's correct.
So maybe, I don't know, I don't know how to do this, if, maybe we could come to a little different number.
They have three different options.
And not pay for every sport and every activity, maybe one, one fee, maybe $50 for everything for high school. In middle school, I don't know, you don't charge anything now, maybe we can, we, I actually talked to Solomon a couple of minutes before the meeting. Didn't you have a number for me on that?
Well, if we pay, if we, yeah, I do, just give me one second here. If it was a $50 one-time, if we jumped up from 35 to 50, it would generate just about a little over 53,000, versus about the 37,000 at the 35.
And the middle, that's not counting anything for the middle?
That's not counting anything from the middle school.
And that, the, the number you had for the $50 was what, 100,000, something 100?
No, that's, if we charge, which one?
One, one fee.
One fee?
$50 for the?
If you just charged $50, bumped it up, it would, it would generate a little over $53,000.
So then if you charge 25 at the middle school, there's less participation there because there's less sports and stuff?
That is correct, yes.
Do you have a guess at what you do?
If we charged, let me read, if we tried a one-time $25 fee at the middle school, it'd be about $12,800.
So around 60?
About 60, somewhere.
A little over 65?
Close to 65, possibly, yes.
That, that'd be better, but.
I like, I like the idea of paying a one-time for everything, much more than I like the first one.
Dr. Haynes, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I think there's, there's some leeway here, and I think there's not a lot of people on the same page on this one. Can we, I mean, maybe I'm out of line here, but maybe we can table this for now and get some more numbers for the next work session.
Can we talk about some of those?
Board members, communicate with Dr. Haynes and let him know what you're thinking, your ideas. I mean, I don't know how much communication you've had over the last couple of weeks about this, but there's a lot of different ideas, I think, coming from people here that maybe we can, we can look at. And then also, from a transparency standpoint, after listening to Mr. Maxwell, maybe we need a little more clarification with the public so they can see where the money's actually going, what we're collecting and all that. So how about, let's table this and tell the next, and work on this our next work session. You okay with that?
Certainly, if you communicate what your thoughts are, I mean, I presented three options, but you've got to give me something.
I understand that you've, you've done the work, I'm not saying that you haven't. But I'm asking the board now to communicate with Dr. Haynes, because he's done this work, he's done it three times now. And now he's, there's some apprehension here that's coming out that I'm not sure he's really was privy to. So let's do that and, and talk to him and, and let him know what we're thinking so he can put the numbers together, and we'll all be on the same page at the next board meeting to make this decision.
I completely agree, we need to get more facts, because like, like, I want to go back to the curriculum again. If we got, you got an activity that's part of the school, and then activities that are extracurricular, I think that needs to be weighed in there too, but we can discuss that. But, you know, I didn't know this, you know, I get, I started getting calls, and I can't answer the calls, and I'm not much on the computer, so, yeah, here's where we're at. I think, Martin, that's right, and I'll say this, nobody, this, this guy works his tail off.
I know, he's, he's done it three times.
Don't take it wrong when I question you, it's not personal. I just want to get the information first, that's why I took some notes, and I think we got, we got a problem with this one.
And Dr. Haynes, if, my, my suggestion or what I want to ask, is there a way to separate the, the fine arts or academic from the sports?
We could, but you got to remember, those, those other fine arts still participate in Misha activities.
Okay, okay.
And sponsored, yeah.
Okay, I understand that.
And have the transportation costs.
Okay, I understand that. That was my question.
Yes.
I have one.
Along with that, I'd like to see a separation of the Misha fees and the transportation, so we know what the, what the costs are for Misha for each of those activities, and the transportation costs for each of those activities.
Right. I understand, board, that in the foundation formula for the school districts, correct me if I'm right, Mr. Metz, the transportation money is shrinking, isn't it?
They're only funding.
We don't receive transportation money for activities.
Okay.
So that's, that money's taken out.
That money's taken out.
Before, yeah, we only get reimbursement for.
Regular.
Yeah, regular transportation.
Okay, okay. Dr. Green?
I've got a question, but did you get yours?
Oh, I was just going to bring in the, the transportation, but Wes clarified that it, for activities, we don't, we don't get anything, but for all of our other transportation costs, the legislature years ago said that they would fund that, they would reimburse it 75%. We're now at like 17%.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's huge.
It's currently $200 million underfunded, the whole transportation throughout the street.
My question, just perspective for a board member, what is the district currently budget for extracurricular costs, whether it be transportation, different fees?
Salary, do you have that number, Wes? You know, probably.
You could put that together with, for the work session.
We supplement the three high schools about $300,000 apiece. So it's about $900,000 for the three high schools.
That's for the three high schools.
And the middle schools runs about 25,000 to 50,000, depending on the school.
So about a million?
About a million dollars. That does not include salaries and benefits. That's just the transportation costs, uniforms, all equipment associated, officials for the games, entry fees for the tournaments, what am I leaving out? There's lots of stuff that's encompassed.
And I think that you can, you can divulge all of that information in a more detailed way. I think that would help us and others.
Okay, board, I think there's a consensus here to table this, is that correct?
Bring it back next month.
We'll bring it back at the next board meeting, and so we don't need to vote on this.
Well, the work session, we'll talk about it again at the March work session.
Okay.
That's a tough one.
Ladies and gentlemen, there are a few of us here that have gray hair, and we need to go to the restroom, so we're going to take about a five-minute break. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's get started again. Board members, please take your seats.
Five, four, three, two, one. Time's run out now. Let's bring it back to order.
Okay.
Are you kidding me? I'm like, my cheeks are like fire.
Our next, our next order of business will be the Humboldt property sale. Who's got the info for that?
I can, I guess I'll take it, Robert's not here.
Go right ahead.
Basically, we're asking for permission to go ahead and, and start the process to list Humboldt. We will, we'll do an RFP for a broker. Once the broker's selected, we'll do a, make sure that they do an all-agent listing, so that way any agent can show it.
Right.
I think we currently have that with our current broker, so we would not have to go out with a new broker, we could stay with our current one. But I think it's been three years since we did an RFP, so it'd probably be a good idea to go ahead and do another one.
Probably time to do it. Why don't we make a motion that we get this on the market, so let's start that process?
All right, we have a first and second for the Humboldt property sale.
Question?
Any more discussion?
Does that motion include an RFP for a new broker?
Start the process.
All included, yes.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none, let's vote. Motion passed with seven zero. Next new business, seems like we have a commons area at Lindbergh that needs some work.
Well, we wanted, yeah, that's right, we wanted some modifications to that space. You'll notice that I gave you three attachments. Two of those are conceptual drawings for options one, two. The other document, please disregard, I've given you a handout that should give you more information so you can make a, an informed decision this evening. So what I want to do tonight is present to board a plan, which is, it is a time-sensitive project. We need a decision this evening. It is cost-effective, and I'll explain why that is. And, and also it does support the long-range facility plan, okay? And I have collaborated with this project, on this project, with Dr. Williams, Dr. Norman, Mr. Metz, and I do appreciate their help and support in the project. So the, the project is to add a second floor to the commons area at Lindbergh, okay? So in two thousand, there was, there was an addition put on to the northwest side, the west side of Lindbergh, okay? It is two levels. On the lower level, we have basically three classrooms, put in a new kitchen, put in the commons area, which at this point is mostly utilized for breakfast and lunch. And then the second floor is what we've always referred to as the community center, okay? And then the commons area is an open two-story section, okay? So with the closure of Lake and Humboldt, we've been working diligently to figure out how we accommodate the additional students at Hosea, Lindbergh, Rubidu, and Spring Garden. We want to do what's best for the students and what financially makes the most sense, okay? So understand that the long-range plan includes Lindbergh to stay in place for the indefinite future, okay? And we also know that we want to, at some point, move to a twelve elementary model. And for that to ever be reality, you're either going to put in a lot of modulators or you're going to put on additions to the buildings, okay? So when we put on this addition at Lindbergh, I'm going to back up, to do what I'm calling option B, add a second floor, okay? Understand that the design of the building will, will facilitate, without too much trouble, a second floor put on to the commons area.
Right.
Okay? That would be about four thousand square feet, which we believe also could be about four classrooms, okay? That is your conceptual drawing B, okay? If, if it comes in, and what we've estimated the project to cost, which is approximately five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, that's about a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Now, if I can draw a parallel or comparison for you, I went back and looked at numerous projects from the two thousand model and did the math of what the project cost in the square footage. Those projects, now eighteen years old, so I didn't build in any, any inflation, averaged between two hundred and fifty and five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, okay? Depending on utilization, you know, some of them were library spaces, like Central's, that, that was an expensive one, okay? So in comparison, this is a very cost-effective project. Okay, so, and also know that this is, this project, should you move forward with it, it is an interior project. There is no grade work. You don't have to worry about things like bad weather days that delays the project, okay? So let me walk you through the three options, okay? Option A, and I, and again, there is a conceptual drawing, is where we would renovate the community center, change some wall configurations. This, the plan is for in-house staff to do this work, that's why we estimate that it's about twenty-five thousand. It would be, that number would be much higher if we contracted that. That's pretty simple, no reason why we can't do that work in-house. That would also include the delivery of one modular unit, okay? The cost to have the modular unit delivered, set up, electrical service provided to the, to the modular, ADA ramps, and the first-year lease. It's estimated that that cost is ninety, ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars. Now, the, the annual leases for these, you know, depending on what we, what we think we're going to do here, would be either for one year, is each modular unit would be sixteen thousand dollars a year. If we would enter into a three-year agreement for these units, then that price drops to ten thousand dollars a unit, okay?
But you have to do three.
Well, if, if we, let me get, that's option C.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Option one is that we would do the renovation, that's, that's, that's the second concept, but option A, or option one, is to renovate the community center.
And have one modular?
One modular.
Okay.
Okay. Option B, which is, I'm talking to you tonight about adding the second floor, if you did that, you, you will eliminate the need for modulators, add four classroom spaces, and it'd be about, we're estimating five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Does that include adding the second floor and...
Renovating the, that's, no, that's so we would leave the community center the same and just add the second floor?
If you add in the, if you do option two.
B, yeah, two.
Two. You may not have to do any modifications to the community center. We, we've been talking with Dr. Gaddy. Yeah, so we've been talking to the principals about that, and we may not need to work on that space. Now, understand that we, if we see that we need to, we can always go in there and do that.
Right, but that would be an option to not touch it at first.
That's correct.
And to build the second floor.
That's correct. And then, and then, of course, no modulators are needed, okay? So option C would be that you do neither option one or two.
Leave the school like it is.
That, that means we do nothing and we just, we bring in the modulators, okay? And that would mean we would need three modulators, okay? So the estimated cost for delivery, setup, electrical services, ADA ramps, and the first year lease is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, okay? Now, understand that when the day comes that we decide that the modulators go away, and I believe that there's no doubt, we're going to do this project, it's whether we do it now or in the very near future, okay? So if we, we have the modulators and we remove them, we have to remove the electrical service, we have to replace the asphalt because it's, it's been ruined, okay? And we estimate that's another hundred thousand dollars to do that, on top of the hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, okay? And again, you'll, you'll see the numbers there on the, the numbers for the annual leases, whether it be one year or three year, okay? And also understand that if we put in the three modulators, basically that renders that parking lot useless for parking.
Right.
And I failed to tell you that if we put in one modular on option one, then you lose eight parking spaces. These are large units, they're sixty-six feet long.
Because there's two classrooms in each one of them, right?
And that's displacement of the community agencies are in, currently in the annex there. Potentially, yes.
So if we were looking...
Option one would be the elimination of those, those juvenile office and... Correct. Option two and three would not remove them from the space.
Okay, that was my clarification. So going to option two, which we're investing in a building that we will keep long-term instead of putting in something temporary and then having to take it back out, I mean, option B to me, it makes fiscal responsibility. I mean, you know, we're doing something long-term, and then we don't have those other expenses. So if we did option B, as Dr. Newhart's trying to point out, is that those services that are still in the community center stay in place, they're not displaced.
That's correct.
So that's another thing that we wouldn't have to worry about.
That's correct.
And so doing this, there's four classrooms that'll, that can be added. So we've got that, and there was one other point I was going to make and I lost it.
You don't lose the people that are there.
Yeah, that's what I said, we do, we don't lose those services.
Well, we don't have a modular.
And we don't have modulators.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
A question I have, Mr. Silk, actually, this is probably for Mr. Metz. This money for this project comes from capital projects?
That's correct. We would take it out of our reserve fund and our capital projects. Currently, our balance is right around ten million dollars, so we do have funds available to do that at this time.
And your capital projects? How much is your capital project?
Around ten million dollars.
Ten?
So, I mean, it would, it would drive the reserves down a little bit, but it's a one-time expenditure to save long-term costs.
Right.
So there is a benefit by doing this.
But in, in your budget, you...
This is not included in the budget because it's still preliminary, and actually, a large portion of it would actually come out of this year's budget. So it would be a budget amendment to this year because the project, like he said, needs to get started right away, so that way we'd be done by the mid, mid-August. So it'll probably happen in phases. So phase one of it would probably have to be paid out of this year's budget.
This year's capital.
Right. And then the rest remainder next year, I would do a budget amendment to the three million dollars and increase it by whatever this, the cost would be.
Okay, Mr. Sneed?
Yes. Let me back this up a little bit. First of all, when we closed Humboldt, wasn't part of the savings, because I remember one meeting I was at, it was two schools for four, what was it, four million, and then it changed to two point six the next meeting. So was the modulators figured into those figures, is that why they came down?
Yes.
So I would assume if capital improvements are going to pay for this, then we should, should save a lot by not paying for the modulators.
Yeah, we'll save, what was it, a hundred?
So what, what would that number be? Would you have a ballpark on that one?
It'll save about ninety-two thousand dollars a, no.
It depends on the judge.
Ninety-two thousand the first year, sixteen thousand a year, yeah.
So, so...
Sixteen thousand dollars a year going forward.
So we'd save the money that we thought we would have to pay by using the capital improvements.
Correct.
So in our budget...
It's going to save operating money is what it's going to save.
In our budget, but then that would put, we wouldn't have to cut as much.
That's correct. We would put that operating money back into the budget.
Okay, okay, that's one part of it. And then the only, the only, the only downside of this, first of all, I'm from the South End, and even though, even though, I'm proud of that, by the way.
Yes, you are.
But I'm from the North End.
When our neighbors, when our neighbors in the North End, something happens to them, we start getting cold feet here. Now, if, if we do this, I, I heard you say that, you know, we may have two more schools closing. I would hope that this wouldn't suggest that another school closes in the North End because they've had enough, okay?
Are there any more elementary?
So unless you're going to bust people from the northeast corner down there, I don't see how that's going to get any bigger, but I just want to, I just don't want to vote on something that sets them up to get another school closed, and I won't do that.
No, I'm just saying that the long-range plan has always been a twelve...
I know what you're saying, but I know you're from the North End, you don't like it either. Okay, so we have to answer some folks here. Okay, then the other part is, what do we tell the South End now? You, you got, you turned Spring Garden into Eight Mile, and now, now, now North End, they're, they don't have any of those trailers.
Well, what I would tell you is, as I've said, that, that to move to a twelve elementary model, the permanent solution is we're going to have to do additions, okay? This project, this is, is the, lends itself to, we don't have to do grade work, we don't have to do anything outside, everything can be done inside.
Oh, I understand, but, but what do I tell the people in the South End when they have the modulators and nobody else has them?
You tell them that additionally, we're, or eventually we're going to do additions to those buildings and get rid of those modulators.
Well, we got more land down there than anybody. We got a lot of land.
We, we don't have the plans in place, which what you currently have now with this facility.
This facility has the specs now to build this second floor tomorrow.
All right, let me back you all up a little bit. First of all, I was on the board, we voted to close Neely and Hall, and we built the Carden Park School, fabulous school, it was exactly a mile from both of those schools. We opened up Oak Grove, a brand-new school, we didn't close nothing.
It's because we needed another one out there, all the people had moved out there.
That's where the growth is.
Okay, but that, that building...
The noise closed?
Noise closed.
I think to answer your question, Dennis, is that the South End's not going to be left out of this. And then also the reminder, and this is where this community's got to come together on, is that we are the St. Joe School District.
Absolutely. But when the whispers are, a high school's going to get closed, and then we've just gotten one of our schools closed that had a newer building, I think, in all these buildings, by the way, we start getting worried.
And, and you're trying to take in the care of the best interests of the entire school district, all areas of the district, and basically the issue at hand is that the land and the space at Lindbergh does not have the area to put modulators. It has plans in place to put...
Oh, no, hey, this is a good...
Okay, you understand all...
Okay, you understand all that.
This is a good plan.
So, so what's gonna happen with the other areas of the district is you put in modulators to develop that plan for the additions and, and/or the new buildings.
Well, eventually, that would be the best-case scenario. But, you know, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
The South End is not gonna be left out of this.
Well, we're used to it by now. But I, I'll just say that because of the CIP, this is gonna actually put money back in our budget, so it's a good deal. I just wanted to tell you some frustration.
Again, I wanna, and I wanna drive home the fact that this is an investment back in our buildings. This is equity back in the building as opposed to money you're gonna spend. It's, you'll never really see anything from it.
Right.
You know, $100,000 to a quarter of a million dollars, and you have nothing to show for it when it's over.
So, we need action on this tonight? So, I, I remembered my last question, that we can start the RFP process immediately with action tonight, and then this can be completed before school opens.
Well, let me, let me address that now because I'm gonna move to the next phase of, of, excuse me. We need to, the board, if you're gonna move forward with this project. My recommendation is gonna be that we need to hire Ellison Oxier tonight to do the design, okay? They designed the original addition. They have the blueprints to the addition. Mr. Ron Oxier's here this evening, here to answer any questions that you may have them. He's been very helpful to us as we explored this. So, he's kind of already kind of up to speed. To get it, for the possibility to be done by time school starts, we don't have time to do an RFQ for Architectural Services. We need to assign them, they need to start tomorrow designing this project.
How much is it gonna be?
I'm sorry.
How much is it gonna be?
Well, we've, we've estimated.
That includes his fee.
That's, right.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
And I wanna give a little latitude here. I mean, it's pretty tough on an architect when you call and say,
Yeah.
Give me a number real quick.
Yeah.
So, I wanna be kind to Mr. Oxier because that's a, that's a difficult thing to do.
Can we do that? Can we do this one on RFQ?
We do not have to, we do not have to do an RFQ.
Joe Hadley's here.
Because it's a service. We do not have to.
I kind of anticipated this because I saw the agenda. You have a board policy, FEB, that normally requires RFPs for Architectural Services. But the board, I think, can suspend that policy. It would take a separate vote. And I think a majority of the board could suspend that policy tonight under Policy BF, which allows the board to suspend. I think you've been given.
I don't know if you need to suspend board policy on it. I think just on professional services. Which would include, including legal.
Except that you have a specific board policy on.
That addresses architectural.
Architectural says anytime their services require.
So, which policy do we need to suspend?
FEB.
FEB?
Yeah. And, and I think the board's been given written, written notice of that through the agenda tonight, which has the policy in there as saying we need to do this without an RFP. So, that allows through a majority vote. Otherwise, if this just came out and you hadn't been given no sent writing, Policy BF requires a unanimous board vote to suspend that policy.
Okay.
So, actually, what we'd need is a motion to suspend Policy FEB.
Okay.
And then, a vote on that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been first and second to suspend the policy. Suspend the policy. Any discussion?
FEB.
Policy FEB. Is there any discussion? Seeing none here, none, let's vote.
Mr. Coak?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
No.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Okay, then I would make a motion to go with option B.
And to hire.
And to hire Oxier. To, to the renderings or, what did you call it? I'm sorry.
The renovation of the Commons area.
The design, the renovation, to start immediately.
Do we need two separate motions or one?
And I'll second that.
Does that need to be one or two motions?
Probably should be two, and, and I think.
One for the option and one for the hiring.
It would be helpful to have, at least for the board, if, if the anticipation is that they're gonna start work on this immediately, that there be some understanding of the financial parameters, and then you can have someone authorize because there's gonna have to be a contract signed with them.
Right.
And as long as the contract's within whatever financial parameters the board approves, you can authorize to sign it upon approval of legal counsel. So, we don't have to bring the contract back to you next month.
Okay, so which needs to come first? That we're gonna do option B?
Probably your option and then the approval of the architect. Because that may, that may drive their fee. I don't know.
Okay, so I'm removing my first motion. And this motion is to go with option B. And that's that motion.
And I'll second that.
The addition of a second floor onto the Commons area.
Yes.
And how many classrooms will that be, Chris?
Four.
I'm sorry. How many classrooms is that?
Four.
Four, okay.
And then, that leaves the community center, as is for now, unless anticipation changes and we have to have that space otherwise.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
So, clarification.
Discussion, go right ahead.
Thanks. Concept B on, on our board docs, if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like six classrooms.
Yeah.
Well, that's if, again, that's if we, if you look at concept B, that, that includes the four classrooms up in the right-hand corner. That would be the Commons area. The, the other four classrooms in the workroom there to the left, we wouldn't do those. When we, when we did this drawing, at that time, we were still looking at doing, doing that. Now, we're saying we're gonna leave the, the community center alone. We do the addition, and then we'll just see from there if we need to do any changes.
We have to do it.
That's correct.
So.
So, disregard the, the, on the left-hand side, where's the, the three classrooms and the workroom.
Because that's the community center.
That would be the community center. We won't touch it.
Okay, so it is the four classrooms that are on the right side.
That's correct.
Okay.
Order, order.
Mr. Sneeden?
Whoever made the motion here, can we make sure that we put that CIP-funded in that motion?
Do we need to do that?
For capital.
Automatically qualifies for capital because it's construction.
Yeah.
It has to come out of four.
It has to come out of that, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
So, if we did not have enough funds in four, we would have to do a transfer into four to cover it.
But we do have enough funds.
Well, we have enough, we have, we have.
We're good.
We have those funds.
We had a healthy balance.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Any more discussion?
This is for the B plan.
Yes.
B.
This is for B. Seeing none here, none, let's vote.
Mr. Coak?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
If I may, just one, just so the board is clear, we will be bringing bids back to you for the actual project.
For the actual project.
Yes. And we'll probably do that in two steps because of the time-sensitive nature of the project. So, we'll be working with Mr. Oxier. Probably will bring to you soon.
Okay, so now.
Through three weeks, the bid opening of what would be the foundational work. We have to cut the floor to put in footings for the columns and the floor, pouring of the floor. Then the second one will be to complete the project.
Okay, so my third motion would be that we work with Ellison, Ellison Oxier to draw up the plans and, and everything that's needed there. And a financial perimeter.
圍
What did we, what did we kind of estimate?
Mr. Hatley and Mr. Oxier here in a little bit and talk about a contract.
Okay, so.
In which they'll negotiate their fee.
Okay, so can.
So, do we need that in our motion, though?
I thought that, that that was a part of the $575,000.
Will they be doing some work off the, basically, how would the, I'm asking.
Typically, it's a percentage of the.
Yeah, typically, it's a percentage of the project. But if they were to do hourly work, I, I think we need to know what the board's agreeing to pay before we can know whether the contract can be approved. Is, do you know what typically your arrangements would be for a contract to this motion?
Normally, you'd do that in a percentage of the value of the cost of construction. And then, we did exactly what, of course, your normal hourly rates are per discipline. Whether the larger, the first goal.
That's for the addition, if there's extra work over there about the standard architectural services. What would be a percentage of that? What's your typical percentage? Seven percent to the.
So, if we said not to exceed 8% of the final cost?
Say seven.
Seven percent, not to exceed seven percent? So, and include that in the contract and have that contract be signed?
Yeah.
So, let me make sure I understand here. Is, is Mr. Oxier's, Mr. Oxier's fees included in this $575?
It is not. No, it is not. It is not. No, that's not equal, that's just to do the addition. The professional services is, you know, seven percent of whatever the project, the total cost is.
So, I assume we just use an AIA form? If that's a group queue, I'm normally, that's reviewed by council.
Yeah.
But yes, using this, the addition can use AIA.
Yeah.
Some exclusions and additions and so on.
Yeah, but I know, we've, we've done AIA contracts before, so we would use the standard AIA form.
Okay.
With the 7% fee.
And once there's additional services that we're contemplating and we need to put in that right now.
Very simple contractor.
We need to, you see, there are additional. So, that's, that's the issue for review. So, you know, we've, we've really focused on talking to Chris about hitting the floor.
Yeah.
I think more than anything else, because there's a very tight, tight window for do that, and so that's gotta.
I think we could probably get started, though, with just the standard AIA, 7%, and then if there's something that comes up, needs amendment, we can come back next month.
We can always amend later.
Agrees.
So, Donna, did you get all of that? Because that was in my motion.
What?
Seven, seven.
What I have is that Lori motioned to accept Ellison Oxier to design the renovation and put the project out to bid not to exceed 7% using a standard AIA form.
7% of the project.
And I'll second that.
And so, in the discussion, again, it's not necessarily gonna be $575. Is that correct?
No, it's just an estimate we have. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll need to bring that back to you and, and with what the bid opening is.
So, it could be less.
Could be less. That'd be wonderful, yes.
And then, we're only paying 7% of what's less. You know, we just, this is just tying this to 7% of the total project.
It could also be more.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And the 7% of the more, that's why I'm asking.
But 7% is standard, right? Is that what you said?
That is. For this size of project, 7% is standard. So, I mean, if it's a $600,000 project, that's $42,000.
You've got my motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none here, none, let's vote.
Mr. Coak?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
No.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
I guess.